President of the ATEA, thank you. You all know full well, I mean, it takes all of us in the Amblissey family to get a school year off, as well as, I think we've gotten this school year off. But that starts really long before many of us are back on the job, so to speak. And so, tonight's inspiring moment really celebrates and highlights some very, very important people to us, and that's our support services staff. From maintenance, to transportation, to child nutrition. All of them really do the yeoman's work and do the heavy lifting, to be sure that all of our facilities, and our buses, and the meals are ready for the children when the school year gets underway. So, without any further ado, if you would run the tape.
Support services involves child nutrition, it involves transportation, and it involves maintenance. And so, let's just take it from a child's day. So, we transport close to 11,000 students in Amblissey. And so, a child's day can be one of those that rides at school bus. That's how you start your day out, so it's very important. There's a lot that goes into us before it goes out to the street or a route.
I want to make sure these are running well.
Well, we start out early in the morning, about 4:00 to 6:00. It's a long day, but it's still rewarding and helpful.
Our role is to ensure that the buses are safe for the kids to hit the school. And not just, not just our children, but the drivers and, you know, people on the road as well, protect those too.
The thing about the child that actually now is at school, where does maintenance get it all? That the lights are working, the pluggings are working, the wells aren't leaking?
Whenever we come in, we grab our iPads and we look up what work was said at the different schools, and check, make sure we got lights, we got water, we got AC. But if you don't have AC, you don't have powder, you don't have much to nothing.
Everything is on, air conditioning working, lights are working. So, what does the facility look like as far as school? So, there's a schedule set up.
I come in, I do paperwork, I look at our schedule, just see what's on the schedule for the day, and what we need to do to take care of our customers, to take care of our students, our faculty, and to take care of their needs.
So, they've made it to schools, they walked in, everything's working, the building is clean, it's ready for the start of the day, the student goes through their morning, and then, oh, it may be time for lunch, or they get there, it's time for breakfast.
We have 3,200 kids, we have 27 women working in the kitchen, and, I mean, they come in anywhere from 5:30 to 8:00, they vary, and they're busy from the time they get here till the time they get through. Preparing lunch, preparing breakfast, preparing for the next day, checking in groceries, cleaning, they just stay busy the whole time.
You know, in our, in our mission is to give the children good nutritious food so they can learn. And then also, I think another thing, and this is just my own philosophy, is give them a smile with as much as you can.
I think it's, I think what, I think what's on our video is supporting the service. I think good, well, dedicated staff members that focus on that, and seeing, it's about the students, it's about the society. But make sure they're comfortable, clean, and nice.
I love the children, and I enjoy the people I live with.
Mainly, I love the children. I like knowing that they have eaten a good meal. When they come in as ninth graders, they're little, they're still kids, watching them develop and grow and change, and when they leave, you know, they're young adults. Just the one-on-one with the kids and helping them, because that's what I do. I love to help people, and that's what I do.
I have found in doing this, it really, the most is fun. A lot of hard work, a lot of fun. And a lot of times, surprisingly, is a smile from a child can really make them say a whole lot.
We do have the best support services staff, and I know I'm biased, but the best by far in the state. They care about kids, they live that, they show that. I have yet to experience really any aspect of our support services that hasn't been of the highest quality possible. So, thank you all very, very much. Now, I'd like to ask Jenny Mount, and Melissa Hayhurst, and Troy Kramer to go to the podium. And I'm really thrilled that we get this evening to publicly recognize and commend all of our secondary school teachers of the year. President Scarpoe, if you will join me out there.
Oh, I thought you were going to be a nice fucking town. Yeah.
Tonight in honor of 17 extraordinary individuals who have been made teachers of the year for 2014, 2015. These individuals work at different grade levels and subjects, but share a common trait, a passion for helping students succeed. We'll see how Ms. Judy Bev of Disciplinary Alternative Education Program describes her job. When adults ask me what I do, I proudly say, "I am a high school math teacher." They quickly deflate my bubble by telling me how much they hated math at school. I believe teaching math is a privilege. Several times, I have felt like I was accomplishing nothing. But then, students would tell me how they made their first A or B on a math test, or they passed a math test for the first time ever. That is why I'm a block. Ms. Jennifer Roach of Wood Creek Middle School describes teaching this way. Teaching is my heart and passion. The kids I teach every day become my own. I greet them every day at the door, and I made my class warm and inviting when they come in. My motto is, "You can't teach a kid until you teach a kid." Our kids are the real winners because of these teachers of the year, and the way they lead and inspire an Amblissey team. Middle and high school teachers of the year will receive plaques this evening. Elementary school teachers will receive plaques in the October quarter. Ms. Melissa Hayhurst, Assistant Director, that will now recognize those three teachers of the year.
Good evening. Middle school teachers come into students' lives at a crucial point in their development, as they are just entering adolescence. Our teachers of the year have a gift for helping students learn to manage new freedoms and responsibilities, while also taking the students further in their academic learning. They truly made a lasting difference in students' lives. I am thrilled and honored to recognize our middle school teachers of the year. From Atascasita Middle School, Kyle Sampson, Campus Teacher of the Year. From Creekwood Middle School, Kellyanne Olson, Campus Teacher of the Year. And she cannot be with here, with us here tonight, but we will make sure we give her a plaque. I just felt it was important that we recognize those who are not here as well as those who are. From Umla Middle School, Jamara Howard, Campus Teacher of the Year. From Kingwood Middle School, John Baron. John is not only a Campus Teacher of the Year, he is also honored as a district finalist. And unfortunately, he cannot be with us tonight. From Riverwood Middle School, Abby Lee. From Riverwood Middle School, Brady Flores, Campus Teacher of the Year. From Ross Starwood Middle School, Lisa Alter, Campus Teacher of the Year. And unfortunately, she cannot be with us tonight. From Timberwood Middle School, David Schout, Campus Teacher of the Year. And last, but certainly not least, from Wood Creek Middle School, Jennifer Lynn Roach, Campus Teacher of the Year. So, Mr. Troy Kramer will recognize our high school teachers of the year.
There's a special connection between students and teachers. Teachers who are being honored tonight will never be forgotten by their students. Students will remember them throughout their lives, for paving their way to future success. It's an honor for me to recognize our high school teacher of the year. From the Cambridge School, Erin Small, Campus Teacher of the Year. While I'm not here tonight, but we will get his plaque to him. From our Cape Building, Lana Snack. She is not here tonight, but we will get her a plaque. She is also being honored as a district finalist. From our DAEB, Ms. Judy Bev, Campus Teacher of the Year. From Atascasita High School, Charles Nichols, Campus Teacher of the Year. From Umla High School, Charlie Duke, Campus Teacher of the Year. And Mr. Duke is also being honored as the district teacher of the year. Kingwood High School, Mark Scalia, Campus Teacher of the Year. Kingwood Park High School, James Brown, Campus Teacher of the Year. Quest Early College, Jenna Grimes, Campus Teacher of the Year. Summer Creek High School, Brittany Wheeler, Campus Teacher of the Year. Thank you, and congratulations to all. At this time, some of our honored guests, mainly our teachers and any of our folks that were in support services that were honored, this would be the perfect opportunity for you to go home and get some rest. If not, if you stay with us the rest of the year. Again, a round of applause for all of our teachers of the year. Next up on our agenda are questions, comments by patrons, employees of the district regarding the agenda items, or any other matters. And I have, pardon me? Ms. Burke? I'm sorry, I didn't see you earlier.
It's okay, I have a question.
Well, welcome. You guys want to head up there yet? Some of our great supporters, and thank you for everybody.
Thank you for letting me address you. It's great to see some familiar faces, and Keith, I had no idea, several years ago, Keith was part of our endeavor and our vision of creating this great facility that you have for students. Nasa Mandela said in one time in the speech that sports has the power to inspire, and it has the power to unite people in a way that little else does. And who would have known that several years ago, our paths would cross, and that it would unite us with all of you, in building this beautiful facility, Turner Stadium, which we had, a small part because we had this vision to bring the Junior Olympics to town in 2012. And as 51,000 people descended upon the city of Umla, and deposited all of their money, we saw what a, what a great thing that sports could do for our area. And I'm really pleased just to, to be here today to say that we had another successful event this summer. A little over a month ago, we welcomed almost 30,000 people to the city of Umla. We hired an economist, and we did intercept surveys to really get good statistics around the numbers, and how long they stayed, which money they spent, and did they, did they go to our restaurants, did they see our hotels? And I'm happy to report that the total economic impact, according to a report, was $49.3 million. The $17 million, it didn't, incremental, increased resident income right here in the city of Umla. Almost $1 million in extra taxes went to the city, and about $4.1 million, including the county taxes and the state taxes that were collected. And as you know, those taxes get put into roads, and police, and all of the kinds of other things. So, it's great all the way around. You couldn't do it without you, and your support of us, and without Troy Pike, Mr. Malmstrom. I'm sure you already know this, but they are such a tremendous asset to us. They actually go with us and help us out, and convince people to bring these events. And many times, people say, "Look at me, we're going to have a national competition in a high school facility," and then they get here, and they can't believe it. They think it's better than most college facilities. And we are pleased to announce that the two, that the AAU Junior Olympics will be coming back in 2016, and, and that I just want to just say, thank you so much, Troy, for having the vision from the beginning, Keith, for having the beginning, having that vision with us and being there. And these people put in long hours. It starts before the event even gets here, because we have to bring in fencing, and dates, and we put up banners, and it's long, hot days, 14-hour days, day after day, and they come with a smile. I've never worked, we work all over the county and all over the city, I've never worked with a more dedicated, hardworking staff. The buses, they run on time. They, they're there every morning with a smile. The medical team, the custodians, everybody, it's a team. And I have parents tell me over and over again, that they spent thousands of dollars to get here, their child needed at the state or regional level, and they spend money to buy in and income, and they can't believe it, they get here, there's billboards and there's signage, and they're just so excited. And these are our future programs, and thank you for being a part of it.
Thank you. Thanks very much, Ms. Burke, we really appreciate your great partnership that was with you. Okay, next up is student body presidents of the high schools. It's a nice team. No angry taxpayers.
Judy, my name is Jay Walton, and I'm the student body president from Kingwood High School. Tonight, I'm joined by the student body presidents from Summer Creek, Umla, Kingwood Park, and Atascasita High Schools, and we'd like to take this opportunity to welcome the school board, trustees, and Dr. Sponder to the school year.
Hi, I'm Ryan Sipert of Summer Creek High School, and I just wanted to thank you for all that you do for our students. We've seen you at many of our schools, and we just really appreciate all of our work you put in for us. Thank you.
Hi, I'm John from Castle High School. I represent Dean Carson, right here. Thank you for all that you've done for us, and all the great work you're doing this year. Thank you.
I'm Brooke Wines, I represent Kingwood Park High School. You see, you offer our school events and helping us out, and you're always there with a smile, we'd like to thank you.
Hi, my name is Dean Williams, and I represent Kingwood High School.
I'm curious, can I represent the boys as well?
We appreciate everything you can do for us.
You make every year better than the last year.
And on behalf of Kingwood High School, thanks again for all that you do. We were all talking before the meeting, and the one thing we all have in common is that since we were little, we've seen you all at our schools, football games, plays, concerts, school carnivals, and all of our activities. Each school has t-shirts for you to wear this year, whether you're at our school, the grocery store, mowing the lawn, you truly represent us all, all of the time. Thank you.
You guys try your, your sugar condes, you guys.
Why don't we get them? What's that?
I get laughed out of graduation, everything else, go ahead.
He thought you were going to lay down in the front.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it. Okay, so now, moving on, we will move to comments by individual board members, and, oh, no, I'm sorry, I meant to say, Mr. I don't know, obviously, it's not going to be a family event, a celebration, and we have to attend, it's a sense of regret, and we well wishes to everyone a starting year. Uh, Ms. Rushing?
Sure, I'll keep it brief, my voice is halfway, halfway here tonight, but just want to welcome everyone back to the new school year. Rushing household, we're two for three in public schools now, one more to go, so we're excited about that. But looking forward to another, another great year of involvement with this district. I'm sure it'll be even more a blast than it was last year, so, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, sir. Sure. Welcome everybody back to school. This is an exciting time of year following the year flip that our school starts. You know, this has been a cool year for a couple of months, so this is great. I want to announce some foundation highlights. I guess we're going to be in the official discussion of our meetings, we're going to be in the regional, is that correct, Mr. Rushing? No, we are, because we're going to get to that. Okay, I'll hand off, and I'll reserve those comments. All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Sit.
Troy, president, did y'all pay for that nice public service nap? What a great job y'all are doing, and how you're earning your keep. I like that, so. No, it was, it was a great event this summer, that was, that was really neat to hear the, the economic impact, and those are the kind of things that, that we're really trying to bring, showcase this community, not just our, our school district, and events like that, due to the support of our taxpayers, and the support of our entire community. Those type of things, we can continue to bring to our community, showcase our school district at the same time. And support services, you know, y'all are a big part of that. The bus service, the study service, the police department, et cetera, trying to get all that stuff taken care of, so we appreciate y'all. And for all the teachers of the year, I think they all have left already, because they need their, their beauty sleep, to get up bright and early in the morning to greet the kids, but welcome back, everyone, and it's going to be a great year.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Conrad?
Yes, sir, I did just want to welcome everyone back, and thank you for the easy transition going into this school year. I did want to thank you all for your work over the summer. I know not everyone was off contract, so the bulk of a lot of the partners' work happens over the summer, so we do appreciate all the work that went into making the transition to this school year, and also to those who came even off contract to send you the punishment of going. Thank you. And last but not least, to my family over at Support Services, thank you guys for what you guys do. You guys truly are the backbone that keeps this district alive, so thank you. Ms. President.
Thank you, sir. Just quickly for me, I just wanted to recognize the Kingwood High School volleyball team, girls volleyball, won for the third year in a row. Dr. Sponso? The American Volleyball Coach Association Academic Team Award. That's, that's great stuff, so hats off to that. Also, I just want to acknowledge, because he won't do it, he will do it himself, but Ms. Cunningham, on Friday that he did, will be, will be interviewed for a TASB regional director seat for, for Region Four. So they'll be interviewing him on Friday, so let's all fingers crossed, wish him good luck to knock it out.
To roll the chance.
That's correct. And then just last, I just want to say, I had a chance today to be at the CLC. If you haven't been there in a while, or never been there, you really, call Miss Alexander and see if you can come by for a visit. It's just astounding, the programs that go on there. I mean, everything Spark, Pace, the DADP, Moser, Cambridge School, the early learning, I mean, that, that's just, it's just amazing, and just to see what we have going on there, it's just, hats off to U of M system, incredible facility. If you get a chance to go, go up there and see. And Stacy, thank you again for, not only, again, for sponsoring and complications. Thank you for your, for your gifts, this is, we appreciate it.
Thank you, all you do for us, we appreciate you.
Okay, so now we will move to our board action agenda. Ms. Conrad? Oh, I'm sorry. I did that to Tommy, and he, you know, and so he goes, I'm sorry, do you have any comments? He goes, no. I'm not buying that you do. Dr. Sponso, I am so sorry.
Right, right, you're the president, you can do it every night?
Yeah.
Well, I really don't have a report tonight. But I, but I do want to point out, I don't know if any of the other party, because I just think that was really the most special, one of the most special things I've ever experienced, to have all of the high school student body presidents in offices come at a school night to a board meeting to, to say what they said. I just thought that was great. Except, I thought I heard one of them say, "Thank us for being around and visiting their schools when they were little children." Is that possible?
No, I'm afraid it is.
For some of you.
Hey, we cleared that up in closed session, right? It was on what's.
That's interesting.
Thank you, and I apologize. Okay, now we'll move to the action items for the agenda. Ms. Conrad, any motions out of closed session?
Yes, sir. As to the personnel, I move that the board approve the administration's personnel recommendations as presented with the gentleman.
Second. Okay. Discussion? All those in favor? Ms. Conrad, any motions on minutes?
Yes, sir. As to the minutes, I move that the board approve the minutes for the regular meeting held on August 12th, 2014.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
As to the minutes, I move that the board approve the special board workshop held on August 14th, 2014.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor? All those in favor?
As to the minutes, I move that the.
Hold up two minutes.
As to the minutes, I move that the board approve the minutes for the special board meeting held on August 20th, 2014.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor? You guys are busy meeting.
As to the minutes, I move that the board approve the minutes for the special board meeting held on August 21st, 2014.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? And now, we will go to updates of board associations and committees, and you know what, I'm gonna plug the education foundation from the top of the list. You were very, very excited to do that before. No, I just wanted to make sure that we did give it. We do have some announcements, the education foundation. Dr. Sponso, I wanted to thank you for reminding me how, those kids from elementary school that was first elected to the board, so that's, so thank you. We have some foundation, education foundation highlights, and first of all, we have principal for a day. That's when we have members of the community come in, and they are the principal for a day at each one of our schools. It's a wonderful event, I was supposed to say for a day about ten years ago, Creekwood Middle School, where one of the students had a little incident in the bathroom where they caught something on fire, so Walt Winnick and I had to put it out. It was a crazy day, and so I realized what it was like to be a principal for one day and the sand was on. That is Wednesday, October 8th. It's a great event for our district to show everyone how wonderful our district is and the business community. Second announcement is we have an employee appeal campaign that's going to kick off on October 1st, and it's gonna run the entire month of October. That's a great source of revenue, it's been increasing every year for the last couple of years, to the employees' support of the foundation. That shows you how important the foundation is, not only to our students, but the teachers see, the teachers and the other employees see the importance of the foundation and what it does for the district. So we want to make sure we announce that, and let them know, and as the time they can support the foundation, that's included in the district. Last, we have twelve campuses running an annual fund campaign this year, including our first high one campus, Oakdale Elementary, so we're gonna make that announcement as well. But that's it, we do have a golf tournament coming up, and we'll talk about that next week as well, and make sure that we fill out our teams, and make sure that everyone who wants to support the event will, will have the best of their best. So thank you, Mr. Schorfeld, thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Okay, we're gonna jump back to our oral order, and I'm gonna move to the audit committee. Ms. Cunningham.
Thank you, Ms. President. The audit committee, board membership receives our annual report. If you have any questions, Dr. Sponso or myself, or you, Ms. Conrad, or Mr. Nalag, that's all we have.
Thank you, sir. The board superintendent evaluation processing goals committee.
Well, the vote tonight on the superintendent's contract ends that process for us until November, we'll talk about some other things, but other than that, no, no report. Excuse me. Oh, yes, we have the workshop next week, so we have the workshop next week, so it's going to help us bring new members to discuss some issues.
Ms. Conrad, I just want to say thank you for all your help in that committee, I know this is a busy event. Yes. All of the charting and taking us to the next level. Well, I, I, I almost started there. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were Ben. That being said, it's, it is a, there's a lot of work that goes into that, and Angela really, really did great this year, and I want to thank you personally for all that work, and she's working more work you do for responsibility, which you're going to give her in the process. Again, thank you, it made it really easy, and I want to thank everybody's input this year, that was a great, great process. Okay, and Willie Dang, Mr. Nalag, say you have no report for this evening. Finance committee, we have no report for this evening. Legislative committee?
Yeah, things starting to pick up. We participated in a filming today to talk about what's coming up, legislative session arising in 2015, the elections that are coming up in November, the three to five main priorities that are going to be underway for us to help try to influence, and so talked a little bit about that. We also had a committee meeting right before this meeting, in which we outlined our plan for getting our local community involved in this process. So be on the lookout on the Ullwood ISD website, we'll get some information to the Observer and the Tribune as well, outlining some community, well, a district legislative committee, district-wide legislative meeting, to invite the community out to participate in that process, to, one, become educated on some of the key issues impacting our district, as well as understand the ways that the community can get involved to help influence decision-making in Austin. And so that first meeting, a community meeting, will happen towards the last part of October, right before the elections, and then we anticipate we'll have an immediate follow-up meeting in the first part of December, right after the elections in November, just to get an idea of what, how things shook out and any changes in direction it might be to take. So more to come, dates to come, they'll be planned for late October, early September.
Okay, while your mic is open, how about advertising?
Advertising is promised. We did a data download, Dr. Sponso got us some information to look at, just to see the impact of advertising across the district. A couple of stats to report, just for your information, is that advertising constitutes approximately zero point zero four percent of total district operating revenue. And in addition to that, we learned that approximately seventy percent of that is actually currently under contract and will be for foreseeable future, so that's good to know that that is at least secured at this point in time. So I see ourselves maybe shifting a little bit of focus, at least in the immediate term, on looking at some local advertisement opportunities, not opportunities, but looking at individual campuses that are doing some things individually with different booster clubs, et cetera, to try to get a standardization and consistency, at least among our schools, so more to come on that.
Thank you.
Oh, Ms. President, I got this question. What, what is foreseeable future?
Well, a lot of the, a lot of the current agreements are under, under contract for at least the next couple of years, some of them up to seventeen, 2017, 2018.
Thank you. Mr. Sid, general evaluation?
Yeah, I was just gonna, gonna remind everyone about the, the student group coming in, and they're gonna be talking, they're gonna be talking about alignment with our programs, as well as margins, benchmarks, those type of things, so. Outside of that, I still need, I would like for everyone to look at your three-year plans, make any notes, and give those to me, as we're, we're trying to pull those together, Dr. Price, Ms. Atwood, myself, the committee, so that we can start moving forward with the evaluation process of our programs.
Okay, thank you, sir. Ms. Conrad, technology and big of this.
Yes, sir. We had our last meeting on September 10th, is that, that last week? It was last week, where we discussed some of the startup school issues, as well as the update on the summer projects that were taking place in technology services, and began our discussion of the technology plan and the update for that. We're gonna continue that discussion and talk about the pilot projects that are going on at some of our campuses, as well as our digital citizenship rollout, and directing student data privacy, our policies, like that will be at our upcoming meeting, which will be the first Tuesday of our term.
Thank you. Okay, now we will move to our consent agenda. We will move through those items, and the board has had an opportunity to converse with Dr. Sponso on questions, so some of these items that we do ask consent, it's because we satisfied in questions that they were, and we're ready to move on to action to vote the other thing. Okay, under, this is gonna be a little new tonight because it's, it's impacted by our recent policy changes to C H Local, and I just wanted to, I just read this once because it's really gonna cover all of these things. Board approval will be required for all purchases of goods and services, indoor services, that aggregate to a value of fifty thousand dollars or greater in the fiscal year, fiscal year, and any single item purchased at a value of twenty-five thousand dollars or greater prior to making any commitment with the vendor. This applies to goods, professional services, and non-construction services regarding this, the purchasing method, whether it's sole source, inter-local agreement, et cetera. As it relates to facilities construction, board approval will be required for the selection of the architect for each construction project for which the architectural fees are estimated at fifty thousand dollars or more, and for construction contracts valued at fifty thousand dollars or more. So that's gonna apply to, that's why there's many items here that we wouldn't have seen in the past, but I just want to say that, as everybody knows, I know this has taken a little bit of time for this, this whole thing to flow through, and it's kind of a little new to everybody, but we'll work out all the kinks. I just want you to know that the board made this policy change, it's not intended as a got you, or we're trying to do whatever, but we want to continue to ensure and raise the level of our transparency, our accountability, and truly, the policy in that regard is no different than it was, because we always required that POs be in place before we actually took purchase of something, no matter what it might be, and, and we're gonna have the, the out-of-policy purchase report that we'll see, and that will help with accountability, and, and honestly, though, there, there will be consequences to not, non-compliance to the policy, because we want to assure that we, as a district, are accountable to taxpayers and to the stakeholders of the community, and this will help us, we really feel, get there. So I just wanted to state that upfront before we, we go through this. So let's start then with the consent agenda, and the first item under government reports and considerations, that's a, that's a report, so that's, it has the policy update. So I want to open that to any questions that you may have now, as it's an information item that we have, but Dr. Sponso is any for now, we'll, we'll come back as an action item next week. Okay, we will move to number, number two. Pardon me, we had a little miscommunication because of the changes we were making there. But all right, we're gonna start with, under superintendent's division reports, considerations and purchases, item A, the video contract renewal, video recording contract renewal. That's consent. Contract renewal for Realtrix Easy Communicator Parent Notification System Software Services. That's consent. Under learning division reports, considerations and purchases, exemption to class-sized limit waiver for Spanish immersion. That's consent. Under purchase exceeding fifty thousand in the aggregate, or twenty-five thousand individually. First, we have item B, International Center for Leadership and Education. That's consent. C, professional development by Dr. G. And the first item under Governor's reports and considerations, that's a report. So that's the task of policy update. So I want to open that to any questions that you may have now, as it's an information item that we have with Dr. Scanzo, if any, for now. We'll come back as an action item next week. Okay, we will move to number two. Okay. Partly, we had a little miscommunication because of the changes we were making here. But all right, we're going to start with, under superintendent's division, reports and considerations and purchases. Item A, the video contract renewal, video recording contract renewal. So that's consent. Contract renewal for Realtrix Easy Communicator Parent Notification System Software Services. That's consent. Under learning division reports, considerations, and purchases. Exceptional class size limit waiver for Spanish immersion. That's consent. Under purchases exceeding $50,000 in the aggregate or $25,000 individually. First, we have item B, International Center for Leadership and Education. That's consent. C, professional development by Dr. Jean Lanning. That's consent. Professional development with V four, read forward. That's consent. IStation, I S I P Buffalo. That's consent. Education consultant, student group development. That's consent. E-Spend, E-Star, and education consultant, item G. That's consent. Item H, S H I, Government Solutions. That's consent. Good. Next, under Financial Services Division, reports and considerations and purchases. Item A, tax refunds. That's consent. Waiver of principal and interest. That's consent. Budgetary amendments. That's consent. Under purchases exceeding $50,000 in the aggregate. Item D, auditing services, Harris County Frazel District, fees, tax, data, and printing and distribution, software maintenance and support. That's consent. And next, under Human Resources Reports and Considerations and Purchases. Item A, inter-local agreement for background and criminal history check services. That's consent. And item B, pre-assessment teacher applicant screening tool. That's consent. Under Support Services Division Reports and Considerations. Under purchases. Item A, contract for various goods and services related to operations under Support Services Division.
Pulled that.
Okay, that's pulled. And under District-wide Reports, Considerations, and Purchases. Purchases exceeding $50,000. Item A, district-wide contracts for various goods and services. That one we left out. Okay. That was quite a lot of them. Ms. Conrady? Do you want to give that back in motion for us?
Mr. President, as to the consent agenda, I move that the board approved the following items by consent. Under Superintendent's Division, items A to D. Under Learning Division, items A through H. Item, under Financial Services Division, items A through D. Under Human Resources Division, items A and B.
We have a second one?
Second.
Okay. On the favor. Six zeros. Okay, now we're going to move back to item one on the agenda. And that is a report now on CAGU Policy Update 100. Any questions, Dr. Scanzo at this point? Okay. We'll move on to... There, under the wrong word, under Financial Services. Any questions to Dr. Scanzo or Mr. Land? So no questions, then we'll move on back to, under item six, Report Services Division Reports. And that was an individual. Just cutting him, I think, pulled that.
I'm sorry, we need more.
So move.
Second, Mr. Land.
Yes, Mr. President, I pulled that, I pulled that to abstain from voting on it. So that was one of the, I told you about, yes.
Is one of those options?
One of the questions I had, abstaining from voting on it.
Because the report is...
Yeah, Silicon Point, there's a Silicon Point piece on there.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I do have a...
Yes, okay.
I was looking through this. Dr. Scanzo, as you know, said to us, a lot of these things are multi-year contracts. And do we really need to vote on something that we're year two of three, year three of five? Because we've already voted on ones. And so, like, for example, our energy contract was like $70,000. We've been that, I mean, so we voted on that two years ago. And so, we talked about how long the contract, we already had this discussion. Does that really need to be on this list because it's pretty tall? And so, you know, I was just clicking through the things, and when I was looking at the things that were first year, those are the things that I was interested in and looked at. Nothing really caught my fancy in those things that I thought I needed some questions about, but just going forward, we need to talk, we've already had a discussion, we've already had to vote, it's a multi-year contract, we need to vote on this again. Just a moment.
Certainly the board would have the option to change or amend C H Local, but under the new C H Local, and I think the utilities is a great example, Mr. President, because you, in fact, did vote and approve the contract for electricity. But now C H Local requires your approval before we can issue the actual purchase order for paying the services. So it does require double action, but strictly under the policy, that's what I meant.
Okay, that's fine. I just, I thought that was interesting because it did get my name up for a second when it was...
That's probably one of the unintended consequences of policy.
That's fine, that's fine. I mean, you guys made it clear, you linked with committee, because what I was, first thing I did was go down the writing column, which was the amounts. And I picked the big ones out, picked the book down first, and... Yes?
I actually found it helpful because they have to be in here when they're making those decisions, but it's also a different thing.
And just so everybody knows, in the meeting, too, all the detail to the things we voted on are in the board package. You can reference that, and you see all the details. It's actually very nice to, I just want to commend you guys for putting it together when you did, having all that detail made out instructions. It's all there, and everybody can see. We're voting on adding the amount, but we've got the detail.
So, Mr. President, and just a question, just to kind of go off in this space. I agree with you on special electricity contracts. I mean, that's what I said. I guess my question would be, some of the other contracts, will we renew annually? Does that same thought apply, you know, with renew annually? And we do look at it out for 25 years, except for the new annual.
No, I think those are on here, but those are the ones that are one year or less of a single year.
Okay.
So, you know, if you have a question, it's usually just a big dollar, maybe you're food, that's a big dollar item. There's some individual things for things like playground materials, a big one. Ice cream, dairy products.
Yeah.
Of course, you may go to, just notice on our video, the beginning of the video, we have some batch bag of beers, things like that, these are approved for trials. These are things that, you know, certainly, if you're better off, if you're, certainly nobody's, so we should have discussions. So, I think it's good, it's just to talk about the true, the true... No, I think this is a great policy, and I think this is good, see this, this, you know, we need to be more transparent with this, to see what is going on in the district.
Yeah, that's all I was going to say, is that when we, and, Mr. President, thank you for bringing this up when we pushed the issue a year ago. The fact that it is, you know, several pages of items and several, several things, I think it's a agenda for us to look at, we knew the bifurcate that was going to be, we're going to have a lot of stuff to look at. So it's just, I wouldn't want to change the policy, you know, I don't think, I don't think you do now either.
Oh, no, I don't want to change the policy, I was just, I just had the initial little clarification. Yeah, and so now, now I, because, you know, a contract like that is something that we need to, and we did it in the discussion, so, just to avoid that going forward, but it's now that I know this life, it's...
But, and Ms. Conrady, hold on, because Ms. Land had told us that this was, this was the kind of event that was going to happen when we started this, so it's...
And you know, the finance committee, you may have approved that for a couple, couple of months. I, per my opinion, I think this is, looks good at this point, you know. You know, later on, we could always make adjustments. Yes, it's hotter.
I just have a question about, maybe this is more often, like going forward, so some of these single items, let's say, for example, the human resources, that was just one item on that one sheet. So is something else added, say, that, will that become a cumulative thing, or will it be something that will be added?
Just a little reminder.
But that will all be kept, presented for, so you can...
Well, it won't be presented to a relative, we will have the records.
It will look just like the best, I think.
Correct. For the wife.
More discussion? All in favor? We should put it across the board. In one extension. Now we will move to item seven, district-wide reports consideration. Dr. Scanzo, we pulled this because we need to...
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to amend my recommendation here, and specifically, if you will look on attachment page five, the third item down, reads sole source, screen ID badge system and software. The amended recommendation I want to make is to strike the $1.55 million number and in its place, $150,000 should be my recommended.
Do you find a bit missing wire for that?
I actually found a better mathematical formula.
So move to consent, you need to get some information as to... Seth? All of the, any discussion, I'm sorry, on the amended motion? It's just, we didn't have to give... Yeah, on the amendment. We have to accept, so we'll vote to accept. All in favor? Now, now we need motion for the original. To truly amend the motion. I thought it would be approved for that motion. Just a second. Mr. Sidney? Okay, any discussion? All in favor? All right, now we're going to move to item A, future board business. Anyone have any items they'd like to...
Mr. President, I just have a question.
Yes.
I don't have the workshop date.
Next week?
Two. Next two weeks. Sixteen?
Yes. Six o'clock.
At six o'clock.
Any other items? Dr. Scanzo, go ahead.
Sorry. Just a sidebar, for anyone and everyone present, that workshop next week is a closed session, workshop, because it involves discussion of the superintendent's identity.
One item I'd like to add, Dr. Scanzo, I wanted to ask if you and maybe with this mouse, with Mr. Price's help, something I came across to Mr. Angelotti from Lady District, was out of the, I don't think in relation to our principal, Jane Ness. But she was asking about if there was a possibility we could offer to senior citizens in our district, a senior gold card that would allow them entry into all district athletic events, cultural events, final fine arts programs at our schools. And she was, she actually sent a copy of, a friend of hers had one, Katie offers this program, and I'm not saying we have to copy what everybody else does, but it's certainly a good idea that we can look into, and I don't mind copying good ideas. And that might be, I think, also a nice gesture and, I think, too, a promotion for us, the district, to have those folks involved and to see what, given that the tax rates really, still with the dollars are going to, and it would just be great to have them engaged, and so if we could...
Well, I mean, that for those of us who are close to that, I think it'd be a great idea. Not being facetious, I think Mr. Kitten and Ms. Mouse, who had the idea originally, and so, Mr. Kitten, you want to speak to that?
We do have one in place, that's for all events, it gives them in for a dollar.
Oh, we do.
It's what? I'm sorry?
It's one, they give in minutes to any event for $1. That's what we already have in place. We don't need to put on a marketing.
But I guess we need to...
No, but that's why, I mean, seriously, that's why I want to make it common, I understand Katie, but they had the idea originally.
No, no, that's great. You got to make sure people know, I mean, somewhere to get that out there, the computers don't, I mean, you know, Brent didn't know, he told the slave, oh, you know, you get one. I wouldn't have either.
If this is something that we want to add to a discussion, we need to add it to a future agenda because it's not on this subject.
It is, you're right.
And so if we're going to have this discussion, we need to make sure we...
It's on the market lot? Okay. Anything else? Okay, and yet I will call it closed. Thank you.